Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 9, 2025 School Board of Elachua County Meeting. It's our public hearing for the adoption of the 2025-2026 Final Budget and Millage Rate. If you would please join me, stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you. And before we adopt our agenda tonight, we have, two of our board members are participating virtually. Dr. Rockwell is still recuperating. Mr. Vu is in Washington DC advocating with the Consortium of State School Board members, with school board members from Florida and around the US for our federal regulations event. So, are they both online? Are we both, Mr. Vu and Ms. Dr. Rockwell?
Yes, I'm on here.
Okay, you're available. Is Dr. Rockwell, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, welcome. And so, I am, because you two are virtual and I can't see you, I'm gonna ask Ms. Green if you would help me with them, if they have, if you all raise your hand and you wanna speak, if you all would, Dr., I'm sorry, Ms. Green, if you would help me with that, since I'm not able to see them, okay? And I was telling Attorney Delaney that I was reading a policy today, and it says that, I think he's probably over there looking now, but if we have a member who is participating virtually, per policy, 165, and we're, all of our votes are supposed to be roll call votes because of that. And so, we wanna, we'll be doing that at this point in time. And I'm gonna turn it over now for our attorney to read our public participation statement.
During the School Board of Elachua County's business meetings, reasonable decorum is required during all portions of the meeting. Conduct that disrupts or interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting is not allowed. Any individuals causing disruption or interference will be asked to stop. Failure to comply may result in removal from the meeting. The School Board encourages speakers to focus on issues and constructive input. The School Board impartially receives all public comments. Comments that are obscene, abusive, or threatening are not allowed. Thank you for supporting a respectful environment where all voices can be heard. For additional information, the School Board's policy regarding public comment is available at the district website.
Thank you. So, next thing on our agenda is to adopt tonight's agenda. We have a couple of things on here. So, if I can get a motion to adopt our agenda, if there are no changes.
No.
Moved by Dr. McNeely, seconded by Ms. Playback. I will now do our vote. Dr. Rockwell?
Aye.
Mr. Vu?
Aye.
Ms. Playback?
Aye.
Dr. McNeely?
Aye.
And Ms. Surtin?
Aye.
Okay, so we have an agenda. I see, we'll start our public hearing now. Our meeting was scheduled to start at 5:30. By law, we couldn't start before then. And I'm gonna turn it over now to Ms. Marte, who is at the podium.
Let me just jump in for one second.
All right.
So, I too wanna, just before you speak, Ms. Marte, to thank her for her guidance, getting us through to this point this evening, and also for introducing us to our new attachment that the public can see, our executive summary booklet. Thank you, Judy, for helping us, I believe, rise with our budget presentations by the booklet. Look forward to that being a permanent part of the budgets here for the years to come with Elachua County Public Schools. And I also just wanna say an extra thank you, Ms. Surtin, just, you spent a lot of time with us ahead of time, working through, looking at, asking some questions. And it's been a while to get us here tonight, so I just wanna say an extra thanks for that. So, with that, Ms. Marte, take it away.
Thank you, Superintendent Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Patton, staff and community members. Tonight, I've been asked by Superintendent Patton to present the final budget request to the Board for your consideration and approval. Many factors go into creating a budget. First, the amount of revenue generated through the state FEFP formula and local property taxes are reviewed. Then, a review of past spending, historic trends, and known and anticipated cost increases such as FRS are considered. The direction of the Board, that staff received in workshops, and I heard during the tentative hearing and in individual meetings, as the Superintendent has indicated, are reviewed and, to the extent possible, included. It's important to understand that a budget is a living document. It represents what we know today to the best of our ability. It is normal and routine to make budget amendments throughout the year as revenues change, expenditures increase or decrease, and priorities are revisited. Tonight, I am committed to answer as many of your questions as I possibly can. I may, however, need to ask for an opportunity to circle back with you at a later date if I do not have all of those answers. And the first problem I'm gonna have is how to run the slideshow. Ms. Green has been amazing, amazing, Madam Chair and Superintendent. I don't know what I would've done without you.
Thank you. I can't re-cant that because I don't have it up here.
So, I just got to the School Board. It was there when I got here.
It was?
It was up. We checked it, we ran it, we did everything. I put some spelling stuff wrong.
So, while we are waiting for you to get the presentation up and going, Ms. Marte, tell me, what, how would you like for us to, if we have questions, would, do you want us to wait until you get to a breakpoint, or do you want us to, if someone puts their light on, we kinda stop you then? Tell me, what's your preference?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my preference with you, Madam Chair. If you wouldn't mind waiting for me to complete the presentation and then give the formal ask of the Board of how I'd like them to proceed with the vote, and then take your questions, I'd be most grateful.
Okay, will do. If you have okay, if you would make a note of your questions. I'm saying that for myself, too.
I apologize. This was working fine when I got here. And when we had the Board members call in, they came up on the monitor and we lost the presentation. So, I apologize. But we did check our technology before we started.
It shouldn't be, okay.
They can't see me.
Can, is the screen showing?
Yeah, there.
Okay, there we go. There we go.
Okay. So, this next slide, you've seen before. I'm gonna go through some of these slides very quickly for efficiency. This is the budget calendar. All of these dates comply with the requirements of statute and the TRIM notification. This slide is a millage revenue comparison between fiscal year '25 and '26. The amount of revenue generated by millage increased by $9.9 million. At first glance, one would think the district has nearly $10 million of new revenue. Unfortunately, that's not what happens. The nearly $5 million dollar increase in the RLE, the first line on the slide, reduces the amount that the state provides in the FEFP formula, the base student allocation, since the RLE is set to the rollback rate. So, if the RLE increases, the state naturally decreases their portion to normalize to yield nearly the same money as last year. So, that $5 million really doesn't come in. The discretionary operating millage is new money of $1.2 million for the general fund. Both the capital outlay increase and the additional voted millage are increases. However, both of those funds are restricted and can only be used for allow, in the case of capital, allowable capital items, and in the case of the voted 1-mill, for items specifically outlined in the referendum. We need to talk about the rollback rate. Again, Madam Chair, Board Members, we spoke about this at the tentative budget hearing. This slide is exactly the same. I do need to, however, announce that the total millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate computed pursuant to Section 200.065 Prenz 1, Florida statute by 5.07 percent. I will repeat that again, Madam Chair, when I ask for a vote on Resolution 26-03, the vote on the millage. This next slide is a new slide, and is actually great news for Elachua. It shows that over the last 10 years, property values have more than doubled in this community. And in many cases, the 1-mill and the capital millage have shown significant growth to help out the budget in this district. The next slide is the historical millage. And you can see over the last six years, millage, the millage rate has significantly declined here in Elachua, due mostly to the growth in property. For the homeowners who are here and watching, their question is, what does this all mean to me? So, for a typical homeowner with a home value of $212,180, this means an increase in the School Board portion of their tax bill in an annual amount of $36.82, or $3.06 a month. It's important to know that part of this increase, the Board does not control. The increase attributed to the required local effort must happen. And any other increases on their tax bill that don't say "School Board" are not under the jurisdiction of this governing body. General fund revenue sources, this slide is self-explanatory, Madam Chair. The largest part of local revenue comes from property taxes and the 1-mill. This is followed by state revenue, which are the FEFP funds that I spoke of. Next, it's a transfer from capital to cover statutorily allowable items, such as technology, maintenance of our buildings, building improvements, building maintenance staff, school buses, and property insurance, just to name a few. I did review the maintenance transfer, and many like-sized districts transfer similar amounts. So, this transfer request is in line with similar-sized districts across the state. The next wedge is federal through state, and those are our grants, Title 1, 2, 3, 4, Carl Perkins, to name a few. And finally, we have fund balance, which is nearly the same amount as the audited fund balance from last year. Included in the fund balance are committed items, restricted items, assigned and unassigned balances. And if Madam Chair wants me to get into those definitions at a later point, I will. But I don't wanna bore everybody with Gatsby 54, which explains how you bucket those monies. The next slide is detail of what is included in the revenue in the general fund budget, broken out by federal, state, and local. And if anyone has any questions about any of those lines, I will do my best to answer them. The next slide is your general fund appropriation. Couple of items I wanna point out for you. In the first line, under instruction, the big number in purchased services is our payment to charter schools. The other big number in instructional services under material and supplies is the textbook adoption. That is required. It's the year we must do it. And then, under operational plant, we've got some pretty large numbers. Those are the maintenance of facilities. That is part of the maintenance transfer. Again, another slide and another breakout of our fund balance. Total's the same amount as Page 8. Next, we have special revenue food service. Very similar to last year's budget. No outstanding or significant changes to report here, Madam Chair and Board Members. Next is the special revenue fund. Much of what's in here is, in addition to what we knew at tentative budget, at tentative budget, as you know, we had a hold on some of our funds from the federal government. Those funds, those holds have been released. And to the extent we've received the awards, those dollars are included here. There are some that came in this week that will be the subject of our first budget amendment that we will handle very shortly. This is the appropriations tied to those grants. Again, the appropriations comply and adhere to the amounts awarded in those grants. So, the grant said, this is how you can spend the money. So, that's how it's shown on the sheet here for you. The next budget is the capital budget. Capital revenue includes the 1.5-mill CONDS from the state, half penny sales tax revenue, which is an estimate, as well as estimated investment income. Please note, and I believe Madam Chair already pointed this out to me, investment income is much higher than it was last year. Last year, the budget was low. Actual results came in significantly higher. That's one factor. Additionally, fund balance has grown, so the money in the bank continues to grow as it relates to capital. These are the appropriations in capital. Internal Services Fund, this is the district's self-insurance fund. It's important to note here, the insurance program runs on a calendar basis. So, fund balance that you see in front of you today is not really the fund balance that the program runs on. Further, the State Office of Insurance Regulations for the state of Florida requires all self-insured programs to retain a minimum of 60 days of fund balance, cash on hand, to make sure that all claims by participants can be paid. That amount represents approximately half of what is shown as fund balance on this sheet. The other important information that the Board needs to know is many of our staff members are off full-time calendar in the summer, and that's when they take the opportunity to attend to medical appointments and voluntary procedures that they may be having. Claims rates during the month of July and August and into September are significantly higher than claims during the rest of the year. The end of December fund balance is historically much lower than July 1. This is what we anticipate for claims based off the actuary. This is not staff guess or estimate. We use the actuarial assumptions here. Madam Chair, before I get into the ask of the Board, and I know Madam Chair already knows this, at the point where the Board is ready to vote, I'm gonna need to bifurcate the items, and I'll walk through that with Madam Chair when she's ready. But this would be a wonderful time, Madam Chair, for either public comment or Board questions, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Marte. I am, I'm gonna call for a public comment before Board discussion. Ms. Johnson, do you all have any citizen input forms?
On this particular item, no, ma'am.
Nothing on the budget?
On the budget.
Or the millage rate?
For item C... Excuse me, D1.
V1 is what you're having for, the resolution for that? Okay. All right. So, I will bring it back to the Board then if we don't have any citizen input. Does anyone, you all have a question for Ms. Marte on anything that she's gone over so far?
I haven't.
You don't have any? Okay. Ms. Marte, I think I might have, I think it was just a slip on Slide 8. You mentioned that the federal portion there are the title grants, and I think that is, that's, that's, the title grants are in a different fund, not general fund on Slide 8.
You are absolutely right. That is Medicaid reimbursement and E-rate reimbursement. Madam Chair, I stand corrected.
And I just wanna, like, point out for my colleagues that if we would notice that our, the local tax receipts exceed the state amount this year, or the estimate, I don't know what, if you guys noticed that or not. And then, on, on Slide, Slide 9 and 10, I think we'll go to the appropriations on 10. You mentioned that the purchase services amount was the transfer to charters. Is that in account number 5,000, or tell me where that is?
5,000.
Okay, so that, the 25 million is the pass-through to charters for their FEFP. Can you tell me where the, the 1-mill that we share with them, with the charters, where that's recorded? Is that in the same account?
I'll have to get back to you on that. I don't believe it is.
Okay. I've been trying to find that. That's why I ask.
I'm pretty sure you will find it. I just didn't get the answer to that, and I know we're being recorded, so.
Okay, that's fine. You can let me know.
I'll be able to follow it if you have a chance.
Got it.
Okay. And then, you also mentioned that the transfers from capital to pay, into general fund to pay for maintenance costs. Is that account number 7,900 and 8,100, those two lines?
And also technology, Madam Chair.
Can you tell me which account number technology? Is that 6,400, or, I mean, 6,500?
No, 6,500.
6,500, okay.
There's a pit when you have time.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. I should've got them first. Okay. Let me go through mine, and then I'll come back. And the contingency fund, Ms. Marte, have you computed, or would you get back with us, the financial condition ratio for where we are before, at June 30th, or whatever? Because we haven't gotten a budget amendment through June 30th. The last one is March 31st that I've seen.
We can compute that. You have the AFR in front of you with the actual results, so we will provide you that tomorrow.
Okay. And I just wanna apologize to you, well, not apologize. I just haven't had a chance to get through that because I didn't get it. I don't do well with those really small ones, numbers that I just got it today, so, this morning, so. All right.
You, you've given us a lot of questions, Madam Chair.
Sorry about that.
No, don't be sorry. That's all.
It's, it's what I always have. I'm sorry when I go through it.
I can tell you that I'm very used to it. It's absolutely fine. I just wanted to point out that you have done a very deep dive into this work, Madam Chair.
On Page 13, Slide 13, you mentioned that some of the federal funds were released this week. Does that kind of explain why the federal estimated revenue is about $6 million less than what it was in the prior year?
Yes.
Because I had a question about that.
Unless I have, well, part of it was, there was still roll forward in last year from ESAR a little bit. And yes, we don't have all the awards in here. We're still getting them. So, we expect to bring a budget amendment for grants pretty quickly.
Okay. So, the ESAR we had in a different fund, so it wasn't here. So, hopefully, it's just the title.
It was in 420, though.
Okay. Well, I thought, they showed it separately on a budget amendment.
They did, but it rolled up into 420.
Okay. All right. And then, what was that? What's my question? I just asked that one. And you got, you told me about the investment income. So, I had a question on Slide 16. The $6 million that's being transferred to general fund from the half-cent sales tax, what's that for?
Technology.
Technology, okay. I just wanted to confirm. And then, I think that's all I had. That's all I had. Thank you. So, Dr. Rockwell, you're recognized. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You covered a couple of the things I had. Ms. Marte, one of my questions, when you mentioned comparing the capital transfer of other like-sized districts, was Leon County one of the districts that was compared?
I have the list not with me.
Yeah, Dr. Rockwell, we looked for that today. We couldn't find it, so we placed a call in to look for it today.
I did, I did.
Okay.
You did?
I went through my own, and I looked it up from their budget documents. I think I looked at Leon, Madam Chair, but I can, I can provide you that information tomorrow. I have it in my briefcase.
We couldn't find it online.
Okay, because I, I brought this up to Dr. Patton, that one of my concerns with our, with our capital transfer and comparing it to other like-sized districts is most of the districts that are similar in size to us do not have a huge university and a state college and a VA hospital. And all of these properties are not on the tax roll. They're all tax exempt. So, I felt like Leon County would be a good comparison because they also have state universities and colleges and, you know, the, the state capital buildings that are all tax exempt. So, it would be a better comparison in terms of what our tax rolls look like. So, I'm interested to see that. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I yield.
Okay, thank you. Did Mr. Vu have anything?
Yes, I have a question on Slide 13, and I'm just curious as to why there's nothing in for Medicaid revenues, special, other federal. I'm not sure if that's just coming from state, because I do see it in the general fund revenue.
If I heard you correctly, Mr. Vu, Medicaid reimbursement is not recorded in Revenue Fund 420, which is grants?
Okay.
Medicaid reimbursement?
Just wanna make sure.
And Madam Chair corrected me. The slice of pie that you see that's $980,000 is Medicaid reimbursement and E-rate.
Yeah, so seeing it in the general fund revenue then is appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly want to again, not only thank Dr. Marte, though, or Judy Marte, also, a lot of staff had to go a lot into putting this report together. There's another young man in the back, Brandon. Thank you for having stayed on with us. He is really the sole provider for the AFR, which is, you know, 170-some-odd pages. So, Brandon, just, we know you're doing great things at UF, but thank you for sticking with us. with us from the moment you left and be sure we could be at this spot today. So thank you.
Madam Superintendent, Madam Chair, can I add my thanks? It has been, if, if you saw the texts and our weekends, I've spent more time with Brandon than I have with my family for the last month. He has been amazing. Every single question I have had, he has immediately gone to find a solution. Without him, this would have been much, much more difficult tonight. I want to thank him. And the Superintendent didn't tell you all she's having a thank you breakfast for the finance team in the morning, because they've all stepped up and really done everything they could to help me keep the district going strong. So I want to thank the, the people that never get thanked, that you don't get to see too often. I'm not going to name them. There are only six of them left, but I'm going to forget someone's name and have a problem. But thank you for allowing me that moment of personal privilege, Madam Chair.
And thank everybody. This is heavy lift. Lot of, lot goes into doing, doing this work. I do, and I don't, I don't dismiss it. I always have a lot of questions, and I hope that, that gives the staff some, what is, what, like, kind of makes, lets you know your work is important if somebody is reading it, that you're not just doing it and nobody looks at it. Because I do, I, I actually have gone through it a whole lot, and I'm, I'm really like restraining myself from asking a whole lot of questions, because I did start looking at the AFR. I looked at the general fund and all, but, but I'll, I'll refrain from that. So thank you, Brandon, as well for helping. I know it was a lot, and Ms. Marte, for your help as well. So I'll let you, if you want to read the resolution now, I think is what you want to, turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I do apologize, but I do need to read the resolution into the record in its entirety. So I am going to read the resolution and ask the board for a specific vote on Resolution And Brandon or somebody is going to make sure if I make a mistake, you correct me. Madam Superintendent, if you could, because the record has to be correct. Resolution of the District School Board of Alachua County, Florida, determining the amount of revenue to be produced and the millage to be levied for the general fund, for the district local capital improvement fund, and for the district debt service funds for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. Whereas Section 10 11.04 Florida statutes requires upon receipt of the certificate of the property appraiser, giving the assessed valuation of the county and of each of the special tax school districts, the school board shall determine by resolution the amounts necessary to be raised for current operating purposes and for debt service funds and the millage to be levied for each fund, including the voted millage and whereas Section 10 11.71 Florida statutes provides for the amounts necessary to be raised for local capital improvement outlay and the millage to be levied and whereas the certificate of the property appraiser has been received. Therefore, be it resolved by the district school board that the money, I'm sorry, that the amounts necessary to be raised as shown by the officially adopted budget and the millages necessary to be levied for each school fund of the district for the fiscal year are as follows. District school tax, certified taxable, I'm sorry, district school tax, non-voted levy, certified taxable value. I am going to read this number once it applies to all levies. Required local effort amount to be raised, $82,181,116. Millage levy, 2.979. Prior period funding adjustment millage amount to be raised, $662,084. Millage levy, .024. Total required millage, $82,843,203.003. School district tax discretionary millage, non-voted. Discretionary operating amount to be raised, $20,634,936. Millage levy is .748. School district tax additional millage, voted levy. Additional operating amount to be raised, $26,586,813.100.
27.
Okay. Let me do it again, Madam Chair.
Please.
District local capital improvement tax, non-voted levy. Local capital improvement amount to be raised, $41,380,220. Millage levy, 1.500. District debt service tax, voted levy, not applicable, is zero. The total computed rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate computed pursuant to Section 200.065, Prenz 1 Florida statute by 5.07%. And the resolution signed by your Superintendent, Dr. Kamala Patton, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Marte. Before I get a motion, I got a question, and I, I want to apologize right now for not asking this earlier. On Slide 4, correct? I meant to ask you if that 5.07 was the correct calculation, because I thought I did it and I got 7%.
It's correct, and it's been certified.
All right. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Resolution 26-03 that has been read into the record? Moved by Ms. Playback, second by Dr. McNeely. Do we have any citizen input?
Not on, not on this particular item, no.
On the next one. Okay. I will now do a roll call vote. Dr. Rockwell? Mr. Vu?
Yes.
Ms. Playback?
Yes.
Dr. McNeely?
Yes.
Ms. Certain? Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Okay. 5-0. Yes. Okay. All right. We will go to 26. That's the millage. We go now to the final budget for, which will be the Resolution 2604.
2604 is a request, and this does not have to be read into the record, that the school board adopt, I see a typo, the final millage rate and the budget in the amount of $604,94340. The line ahead of this, Ms. Green, has a 4 inserted in there. We need to correct that before the Chair signs this. I'm asking for the board to vote the budget.
I have a couple one tabs, so it's after, it's after my third number one tab.
Third number one tab?
Yeah. You see it? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Marte, tell me where you saw your, the typo.
In the last whereas, second line, Alachua County adopted the. My copy has a 4 before the word millage. Has the number 4.
Oh, I see the number 4. I see it, yeah.
It's after 30.
Okay. Yes, I see it. Okay. All right. Okay. So is there a motion to approve our, the budget as presented? Okay. Moved by Dr. McNeely, second by Ms. Playback. We will now have citizen input.
Our two speakers on this issue are Carmen Ward and James Carrington.
Okay. If you would come, state your name. You'll have two minutes with the board.
Thank you, Carmen Ward, Alachua County Education Association President. Thank you, Chair Certain and board members for hearing public comment. I am very excited that we are returning to the table, and I really appreciate the presentation from Ms. Marte, and I'm so wonderfully excited that we have very competent finance department here now, and I hope that we do, do our best by our employees this year in bargaining. Last year was dismal and not well-received by the employees, and I think we are in a better position this year according to the budget. So I just want to say that it looks pretty good. The fund ratio is not what we had predicted, and I think a lot of the doom and gloom that was expressed at the end of the year is dissipating. So I, I appreciate the finance department's work on this, especially having a very helpful and valuable consultant for our district. So that's all I have to say, and I look forward to bargaining tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
James Jim Carrington, citizen of the city of Alachua and Alachua County. Let me first say thank you for what you do, and thank you for asking questions on the budget. I'm, it shows the public that you're paying attention. Let me also state the, when you go home tonight, take a look at your property tax bill. Notice the tax assessors' market value for 2024, and notice the market value for 2025. Market value, although we've increased money, the market value for your house has probably gone down. Mine went down between 8 and 10% on a very nice home. It worries me in these economic times that we talk about budgets, and I think your, your staff have done a wonderful job, and I know how complicated it is. It's like a juggler who has three balls or five balls, and we can't tell which one he's catching. I do want to say that it is important to remember to try and save money. If you have unencumbered funds at the year, let's not scramble to encumber them. Let's use unencumbered funds for savings. Let's remember that not only do the teachers need a salary, we senior citizens and our Social Security understand that, that our, our paychecks have been reduced. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrington. Anyone else? Okay, that's it. We'll bring it back to the board. Is there any board discussion? Does Ms., Mr. Vu or Mr., Dr. Rockwell have anything? Okay. So I only had, and I'm looking for my notes. I must have habit organized today. So I, I started just like preliminarily looking at the AFR.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry.
Can we vote on the budget before we discuss the AFR?
I, I did, but it kind of relates. My comments are going to go.
Okay. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Okay. Dr. Rockwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we vote on the budget, I just wanted to point out a few things that were in Ms. Marte's presentation, but that I, that I wanted to just highlight, and one of them is the increase to the base student allocation. That is a less than 1% increase. I just wanted to point out that we are, we are looking at a very, very small increase. And it was small last year. It's even smaller this year. Last year, I believe it was about 2%. This year, it's under 1%. Those of you who pay attention to inflation will know that that increase does not come close to keeping up with inflation, and just like all of us in our own homes, see our utility rates increase, our grocery bills and other supply bills for things we purchase increase, our insurance rates increase. The school district has to grapple with all of those same increases and try to do as much or more with less money compared to inflation year after year. So even when it, though it looks like we have a slight increase, it's not keeping pace with inflation. And when our budget increase doesn't keep pace with inflation, it's really not an increase. We're trying to do the same or more with what is functionally less money. And I think that's, you know, an important thing to point out as we, you know, look at this budget that our, our staff has done a truly phenomenal job working on. But as a board, we've had to really work together and make some hard decisions, prioritizing things so that we can do as much or more with less. And, you know, it's, it's certainly been a struggle for us as a board, and I know it's been a struggle for our finance team, and I do just want to thank all of them, Ms. Marte and the, her entire team, team for their hard work on this. But I, I wanted to point that out. I also wanted to, my understanding with our fund balance, which, which is very healthy, and I'm very pleased with that, but my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong with Ms. Marte, is that some of that is rollover from last year, and not everything from last year has been wrapped up. So I believe that there's, correct me if I'm wrong, about 7 million of that is money that is going to be spent when we wrap the 24, 25 years. Is that correct?
So, may I, Madam Chair? Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Rockwell, there is about $7 million of one mil roll forward from last year included in fund balance. It will be spent in this year. You are correct that even though Brandon's done a wonderful job with the AFR, and we are 98% closed, we have not had our audit yet. I actually meet with the auditors tomorrow to start that process. So there could potentially be some type of year-end audit adjustments that impact fund balance. We won't know that for several months. Knowing the skill of Mr. Brandon, though, I don't expect them to be material. In addition, there are some roll forwards for categoricals that are included, and we're still, Brandon and I, sorting through those to make sure we get those balances all correct.
And so those roll forward categoricals will have to be used within their specific category, correct?
Yes, ma'am, as does the one mil. There's specific earmarks for some, some of these dollars. And, and as I said, Brandon and I spent much of the weekend going through fund balance to do the analysis, but he came in actually before the budget hearing to, to continue to work with me, and will continue to work over the weekend again.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Brandon, for all that extra work. And I just wanted to make it clear for everyone listening that there are monies included in that fund balance that, in addition to us needing the cushion of a fund balance, because like last year, when, when we found out after our Calc III that the impacts of the FES scholarship were much higher than the state anticipated on our district budget, you know, we need a cushion in case something like that were to happen again, but we also have monies included in that fund balance that, that can't be used for just anything. So I wanted to make that clear for anybody watching or who will later watch this meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair. I yield.
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if I may. Do you appoint Dr. Rockwell? That impact last year was in excess of $6.5 million as a result of Calc III. Thank you for bringing that up, Dr. Rockwell.
So Dr. Rockwell addressed some of the things that I was gonna say. So, but what I did, where I was starting was that I did look at the, what we have, the budget you presented, and I wanted to see where we ended up last year with actual charges, because we hadn't received a budget amendment for June 30th. So I had to, since I got the AFR in, I went and just kind of scanned and looked at the, what was actually spent. My first cursory glance, as I told you in my email, was just to look at what the 24, 25 budget was and to compare it with the 25, 26. And I noticed that it did go down like $20 million, $20 million, right? So I said, okay, well, if we reduce that, I really wanted to see kind of like where we kind of cut out some things. And salaries and benefits, it did go there. There were a couple, like instructional technology and some things that didn't go, but I didn't expect those to go down just because of our reliance on technology. But it is with the cuts that we have and the funds that we do have that are in excess that we, any monies that aren't spent in the prior year that are bought forth have to be, if they are related to roll forwards or categoricals, have to stay there. But we have like addressing a lot of the mandates, the state mandates, and I'm wondering if you guys have kind of considered that. I can see some of it, I think, in the technology area. And it looks like in the capital outlay area, it looks like you, I wasn't, the furnishings in the buildings, there's a lot in the furnishing that looks really high, higher than what I expected. But I was wondering if possibly some of those security type things were maybe in that particular title where it may be some type of security upgrade, but it may be in the title here. I mean, it's furniture and fixtures.
So furniture and fixtures is a very broad category. You're correct, Madam Chair. The answer is yes, there are security items in there that we won't specifically go into because we don't do that in open session. I didn't have a presentation for you tonight around our FTE concerns, and that is definitely work that we contemplated as we developed this budget. Last year, the duplicate count of children who both received the scholarship and then attended our schools began to grow in a significant number. The state has sent us a file to ask us to reconcile that. My hope is that we ultimately get that money, but the money is now becoming significant. So yes, we contemplate all of those things. I know Madam Chair knows this. This is my 37th Florida budget tonight, and every year's a little bit different. Every year, the mandates and the requirements change. Every year, the contribution we get from Tallahassee varies. So all of the things that you're thinking of and you're contemplating as you're reviewing this, I, along with the small but mighty team here in Alachua, sat down with the superintendent many times, over many weekends, and went through all of those things. Ms. Neal here is one of the better FTE analysts I've had the opportunity and the pleasure to work with, so the district is in good hands, and she shares data with me daily. I think I get everything from her daily at this time of year. And we are also monitoring with Dr. Atrea the charter school numbers going forward. So we consider all of those things, Madam Chair.
So I did want to, I had hoped for an FTE comparison or some analysis in that, but I can, I mean, I think we can work our way through that going forward. The other thing that I do want us to really pay some attention to, you know, I've asked you for staffing numbers and a comparison of that, because right now, I don't, I'm feeling a little bit uneasy because I don't know where we are with staffing.
We'll work with HR on that. Finance does not retain staffing numbers, Madam Chair, in the format that I would give them to you. And I think Ms. Terry will tell you that what she has currently available is not up to her standards. We want to make sure the numbers we give you are correct. So that is a priority for us, along with our brand-new budget director, who starts tomorrow.
Welcome.
And to go back to the practice that you had had here at one point of monthly staffing reports, I don't know how that stopped somewhere along the line, but we'll get that back going too. And I also wanted to say, when you mentioned FTE, I meant to mention this earlier, that Mrs. Neal and Dr. Atrea and Mrs. Marte, back in March, really did a great job of estimating what our counts will be this year, because I don't need to rehash a sad story, but a year ago, we did that absolutely wrong, and that's what found us with the $6.5 million cut midway through the year last year. Just so I do want to say, you guys did a great job. You're like just within 75, 80 kids, and that was to reduce a number down 916. So it was a very careful calculation that allows us to not be off this year, starting the year. So again, that was done last March, but thank you.
And Ms. Marte, do you, kind of let us know when you come back to us about the number of students who claim the FES but attend the district schools. I didn't realize that was an issue, significant issue for us here. I've heard of, you know, the larger districts, you know, mainly Broward and Dade getting like hammered by that. So I didn't realize that was an issue that we were having.
It's becoming one, Madam Chair. It was not, but the staff here did a really good analysis of that comparative, and I have somewhere in my email the number. And quite frankly, if it's 50 at $10,000 a student, that's a lot of money that belongs here in the district. And you're correct, the year I was at Broward, it was an $18 million issue, and Miami Dade was even bigger. But we have, at this point here, put in the tools to appropriately monitor that going forward to make sure it does not become a big issue that we are unaware of. Children sitting in our seats that we're not getting funded for.
What's the solution?
I don't, so the state has acknowledged it. In the case of Broward, the year that I was there, they paid us for quite a bit of that. And I don't want to misspeak because I'm not current on the topic, but I will call some of my colleagues. I admit, it's my understanding that the reason the state reached out to us is because they want to make sure they mitigate it early so they can claw back as much money as possible.
I think that is their solution, to draw it to every district's attention. Here's a date certain that you need to go through your own files and let them know before they dish out all them funds. So again, way ahead of where they were at in the past.
That's correct, Dr. Patton.
All right. Oh, Ms. Neal.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna add to that. What the state is doing for current year for the correction, I do want to address, is that for each of the payment files that they are doing before they send payment to the Family Empowerment Scholarship families, we are running all of those students through our student information system to compare if they have a current enrollment, and we're sending that file back every quarter. So we did the initial August payment for new enrollees. We did the September 1st payment for returning enrollees already, and have found students that were in our district that were on their files. So we have already submitted students this year, and we've heard from families who are saying their payments are on hold because we reported them. So it is a process that the state determined and updated the entire process for this year moving forward. I'm not up to date on the prior year corrections either, but for the moving forward, it is a quarterly now review that we're doing each quarter before the payment files.
So the families that you said are letting you know that their payment is on hold, are they in a district, enrolled with us?
We have heard from several who, whether their withdrawal just wasn't done properly and so that, but some of them are saying, I am, and I'm like, and we have been talking to families about, you can't do both. So they are, the state is really on top, and they have been, it was within, I believe, 24 hours of my submission of our file that parents had received emails.
Okay, all right. Well, that makes me feel better because I know that they're tightened, that they closed that loop, because I have, our colleagues in the other districts have been lamenting. I've read numerous articles, but I have heard from colleagues and other, from Dade and Broward, and I think, and Pinellas, not I think, Pinellas also, they've had a lot as well that were, had a voucher and a district school. And DOE wasn't, they didn't like correct it in previous years. So that is promising that there is some correction. Yes, ma'am.
I believe, Madam Chair, it's why we have not received the fourth calc from last year. The state's trying to figure out how to make that adjustment.
Well, if those people spent the money already, they probably ain't gonna get it back, so.
Well, they did before. We got part of it back, a great deal of it. So I'm hoping that there's a little bit of money in the fourth calc.
Okay, hopefully so. All right, if no one else has anything else, we can go ahead and vote. Dr. Rockwell?
Well, I had something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo thanks to Ms. Marte for like all the hard work and the finance staff, Dr. Patton, Ms. Neal. I asked a lot of, you know, questions too. I had a lot of lists of things I was just, I don't want to say the word demands, but you know, things I would like to see, right? I really do appreciate that. I also do want to just talk about too, everyone, there is that discussion about what's going on with the scholarship counts and having us rectify these lists because they were students enrolled last year in schools, but then also taking the scholarship. I do just want to emphasize everybody that that was due to basically a lack of structures from the state, right? So a lot of these students taking scholarships, they had a lot less stringent requirements than students who enroll with us, you know, that we have to do. We have to issue them state education IDs and everything. So a structure really wasn't even set up for us to do the reconciliation last year. And originally, the state was going to claw back over $200 million from all of the school districts. So you probably appreciate the work of the legislature to make sure that much wasn't taken. Yes. I just, too, just want to again thank all the staff on this. I knew this was like a big ask, especially in a really trying time. And so again, I just express my gratitude to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vu. So if we're ready, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. Dr. Rockwell?
Yes.
Mr. Vu?
Yes.
Ms. Playback?
Yeah.
Dr. McNeely?
Yeah.
And Ms. Surtin?
Yes.
Okay, so motion pass is 5-0. All right, so we have voted on Resolution 2604, had our public input and board discussion. And I, I think this is duplicated. Okay, so now we have the general purpose financial statements. And Ms. Marte, that's you.
Madam Chair, again, results for year-end are stable fund balance, actually a bit of a decline this year in overall fund balance. I don't have any real comments about the AFR. If you all have questions, I'll do my very best to answer them. And hopefully, if Mr. Esposito can answer any of them, he, I'm sure, will be willing to do that. Otherwise, we'll get back to you with those answers. For the public, the annual financial report is the actual results of the school district for the year ended June 30th, 2024. It is not a budget, it is actual transactions. The annual financial report is completed in full compliance with all state statutes, government accounting standard board regulations, and adheres to as many of the recommendations from Government Finance Officers Association as possible, and its format is in full compliance, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So I know it's a template that you all have to enter into, and it's micro print, and I could not find my little magnifying ruler that I usually use, right? I don't have a lighter one, I just have one, I got like the old-fashioned one, you know, the little plastic one that magnifies, and I couldn't find that. But what I would like to bring to everyone's attention, and I bring this up every year that I've been on the board, and it's getting a little bit better, but in the financial highlights where it talks about, we spend more in general fund than estimated revenue. And you can only do that for so long. I mean, you can only do it for a certain period of time. It's a lesser amount this year, but nonetheless, it is, in the general fund, it was $6.9 million where our expenses were greater than the revenue. And food service was $635,000, which is usually, that's not the case with food service. But I think we do, as our citizens said, that we do have to make sure that we are not, that we do live within our means, but there are some mechanisms and there are rules that allow us to do some things and to do some transfers and all to do that. But that was the only concern, that's always a concern that I have, of revenues always exceeding expenses. And Mr. Esp, you know, you seem like you want to come say something, so come on.
I do. Good evening, Madam Chair. The only thing I want to say is the transfer is what is referred to as a below-the-line revenue. So whenever we transfer from capital, it won't show on the revenue to expense. It just kind of evens out at the end, you know, in the fund balance. So that's why you don't see a dip in the fund balance when you see the expenditures are higher than the revenue.
Right. And that kind of goes back to our concern, my concern about the transfer from capital into opera, and it is allowable, right? We're not, we're complying with the law, but I, and this is my view, I feel it is a, the state is kind of abdicating their responsibility to cover expenditures. And so since they don't want to give us any state money, they open the floodgates for how we can use the local money, the local 1.5 mil capital, so we can use that.
They will continue to do that.
Oh, they'll get, listen, two years ago, when they decided to let us do.
Use bus drivers' allowance.
Bus, that's what I was getting ready to say. Two years ago, when they opened that, like, okay, yeah, that's allowable, but that is not the best practice, I don't think, just because you can, because those capital dollars for our district, right? We have the sales tax that we can use for technology and to renovate buildings. But outside of that, the mil, that 1.5 capital mil is what we have to fix AC units, to fix roofs and athletics. That's our only source of addressing gyms and fields and things of that nature, and you all know that. So, and yeah, we can use it for property tax, and it's been, I mean, not property tax, property insurance. And when the property tax, our property insurance rates went up in an insane amount over the past couple of years, that's helped to not have to bring that out of the general fund, you know? I mean, $6, $8 million for property insurance for us. It's gone down, it went down last year, but it's insane, so. But thank you for that, and thank you for your help again. Okay. If we don't have any other board discussion on that, I didn't call, Ms. Johnson, do you have any citizen input on this item? Okay. If there's no other board discussion, I'll go ahead, we can call for the vote. Dr. Rockwell, do you have anything, or Mr. Vu?
Sorry?
I think, Ms., I thought, okay, let me get a motion, dude. I didn't ask for a motion. Give me a motion, please. All right. Motion by Ms. Playback, second by Dr. McNeely. I thought I had one. Thank you, Attorney Delaney. And Dr. Rockwell, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Did you, did you have a comment or were you voting?
No, ma'am, I have no comment. I'm just waiting. Are you ready for me to vote now?
I'm ready to vote.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vu?
Yes.
Ms. Playback?
Yeah.
Dr. McNeely?
Yeah.
And Ms. Surtin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Marte. So I don't, that's all that we have on our agenda. If there's anything else we have for the board to discuss, okay? Dr. Rockwell and Mr. Vu, anything else from you all, from either of you?
No, nothing for me.
Okay. Well, thank you all for logging in and joining us, so we are now adjourned at 6:39. Well, thank you all for logging in and joining us, so we are now adjourned at 6:39.